We'll call our budget and finance subcommittee into order. Mr. Mulaney, we have two items in the agenda. Number one is the staffing reconciliation. Like the report?
The two handouts that you see, the budget and staff reconciliation. Staff reconciliation is a single page. We do this every year to see what changes we made over the summer for the budget based on staffing needs that occur from the time the budget is approved to the time we open up school. Usually there's some shifting with some teachers and what have you. This year, there were not very many changes at all in the staffing necessary. Academic classroom, professional staff, we had no changes in any of the line items. Academic program, professional staff, special education teachers, we budgeted 111.8. There's 110.9, so there's a reduction of a .9 special ed teacher. And under academic support, we had budgeted for 45 guidance positions. There were 46 guidance positions, so that's an increase of 1.0. And overall, the professional staff increased .1 positions, FTEs, from the budget to the actual. I think a big part of that was the fact that we had so many positions put into the budget this year. We were able to address all those concerns for the staffing at all levels. So I don't know if anybody has any question on the staffing?
Anybody? I'm good. Okay.
Moving on to the budget report, the quarterly budget report. For fiscal year 2024, we had a budget of $134,639,644. That's an increase of $8.2 million over the previous year's budget. The mayor's appropriation was $127,539,644, a 5.54% increase over the prior year. Projected circuit breaker funding increased $1.5 million. So this allowed us to meet all our contractual obligations and provided $2.5 million for budget building, which hit all of the areas of our budget: academic classroom teachers, academic programs, academic support, non-academic support, academic expenses and non-academic expenses. As of September 30th, there were two payments made for the teaching, the professional staff, out of a typical 26, so that should result in approximately 7.7% of the budget being spent and 92.3 remaining for the year. As you can see, we have 92.89% remaining in that line, so we should have enough money to get through the year and well as take care of any increase in levels that will occur in February when there are some changes typically then. For academic programs, it follows the same line. We're hoping to have about 92.3% available. We have 92.5%. And also, I'd just like to point out, we also increased the longevity totals. We had typically been using those mid-year breakage to fund that. That's to pay for the retirement, when teachers retire and have the buyback of the 36 days. So we fully funded that, so we should be in very good shape as far as that goes moving forward. Academic support, the instructional line is again greater than the 92.3% we'd like. We have 93.1% remaining. For 52-week employees, there were 12 pay periods this quarter, so we should have approximately 77% available for all 52-week employees. As you can see, we're right around that for clerical, the superintendent, the directors, department heads. It's slightly lower, and that was due to the contractual raises. And we did put a reserve, as you can see the bottom of the line at academic support, we did put a reserve in for funding those raises, so we should be fine there. The principals have 91.59%. That's sufficient to get through the year. There's a combination of the 26 pay periods, as well as the two high schools have 52-week employees, so that's why it's a little bit lower than the 92.3. Aides, we increased that line a great deal last year in negotiations, and we have the funding available to pay for all those raises, which were pretty significant. So for academic support, we're in very good shape. Non-academic support, the clerical line is greater than the 77% because it's typically 40. These are the secretaries who are out in the schools, so they are not 52-week employees, so that'll be sufficient to cover them. Custodial and maintenance, we're right around the number that we need. And security would be about 92.3%, so we're right in line with all the salary-budget items. I don't see any problem as far as any of these expenses go to get through the year. I don't know if anybody has any questions on this salary budget before we get to the expenses?
Keep going, Joe.
Fair enough. For the expenses, as you know, it's just the start of the year, so we don't have all our expenditures done. We're right in line, we typically are. One concern that we are going to have this year is the tuition line. We haven't raised that line for three years, and we have a significant amount of out-of-district placements. We'll watch it closely, and as you know, if we get in any trouble with it, we do have a few students who will be aging out, and they're very high-dollar values, so there should be some savings coming in later on in the year. And all our other line expenses are in very good shape for right now. For non-academic expenses, natural gas and electricity look like there's a significant amount expended, but that's also, that includes items that were purchase orders that were put forward but not paid down yet. So I checked today, and between National Grid Gas, National Grid Electric, and Tesla Electric, we have close to $600,000 that hasn't been expended by 9/30. So it shows up here as an expense, but it's encumbered but hasn't been spent. So we're in very good shape with all of those. Transportation's a little high, and that goes in hand with the out-of-district placements, as well as some special ed routes in city that we've had to vent out. And we should have sufficient funds to cover all the transportation costs, and right now it looks like we're in very good shape with the budget as a whole. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Anybody? Okay, thank you, Jim. Well, Mrs. Lebo.
One comment today about the spreadsheet. So I was concerned because we had hired so many teachers. I was wondering why we needed so many teachers, and this is incredible information, but out of our 855.8 professional staff, 2.8% of those people resigned. We just want to talk about how significant that number is. We're holding on to more than 97% of our staff. I mean, there were people who retired and things like that, but we're talking about resignations. So I think we're doing a pretty good job. I just want to thank everybody for their work on that. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Mrs. Lebo. Thank you, Jim.
I'd like to call to our school committee, regular meeting of Wednesday, October 25th. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, keeping your prayers, the well-being, and safety of our students and staff, and also those in harm's way around the world. Superintendent, please call the roll.
Mr. Regoli?
Present.
Mr. Petrow?
Present.
Mrs. Uble?
Present.
Mrs. Lebo?
Present.
Mr. Santoro?
Present.
And Meikle?
Present.
Mrs. Owens, would you do me a favor and read the recording message?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes. A motion, Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Uble. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. One more time, Mrs. Owens.
Open forum is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or an employee of the Quincy Public Schools. Non-community persons not permitted to speak at open forum may submit written statements to the school committee. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Interested parties may also submit written statements to qscopenforum@quincypublicschools.com.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody for open forum? Please come to the mic. Second call. Seeing none. Superintendent's report. Superintendent?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. Before I begin, item A, I would like to talk about what happened today at Quincy High School with regard to the bomb threats that we received, and I just want to review with the committee and the community what happened and how it was handled. On today, Wednesday, October 25th, at approximately 12:31 PM, we received a bomb threat to the school. And then shortly thereafter, at 12:34 PM, we received another bomb threat to the school. Staff immediately contacted my office. The Quincy Police were immediately contacted and consulted. Based on consultations with the Quincy Police, we did a coordinated evacuation of Quincy High School with the, under the guidance and supervision of the Quincy Police Department. It was also then determined that before that occurred, we sent out a school messenger alert to all of the parents to inform the community. The first, that Quincy High School was being evacuated, and second, that the school was being dismissed, and all after-school activities were being canceled. At that point, we did not know how long the search with the dogs and the Quincy Police would take. So based on advice from the Quincy Police, we determined the best course of action was to give parents enough notice that all after-school activities would be canceled. The Quincy Police then did conduct their search of the entire building with their K-9 units. They did a systematic search throughout the entire building. Fortunately, no bombs were found, and the building was cleared by the Quincy Police. A letter has been sent home to the community, the Quincy High School community, alerting them to all of this information. I do want to, in particular, thank the Quincy Police Department for the very swift and thorough response. Obviously, the staff and students did an amazing job with regard to following all of the evacuation procedures relative to this event. And of course, I want to thank all of the members of the SLT. Together, we made a what was and could have been a very stressful situation, very calm and orderly, and very proud of everyone's response. And again, thank you to the chief and his team for assisting us with this. We're hoping that this won't happen again, and we have a meeting with the Quincy Police on Friday to discuss additional steps we can take to try and minimize these types of disruptions within the school community. I should note that the Quincy Police are investigating the source of the calls, and as of right now, we don't have a definitive answer as to who made the calls, but if and when that person is identified, obviously criminal prosecution will occur for sure, as well as if it is a student. Student disciplinary processes will be taking place. This is obviously an extremely serious situation, and it really is a no-tolerance policy that we have to take in these instances, and so will the Quincy Police. So with that, I'll open to any questions that you may have about what transpired today.
Where was the phone call made to? Which office?
The phone call was made to our attendance office. Both calls, to the attendance office, there are two extensions in the attendance office, made to the two separate extensions in the attendance office.
And do we have the capacity to record those when they come in?
They, I don't know that we have the capacity to record all of those calls, but that's something we can look into. We have the potential capacity to trace those calls depending on what type of devices was used to make the calls, and that's what the Quincy Police are working on now, and I'm hoping we can find out.
Where is the attendance office phone number posted anywhere?
Where is it posted? It would probably be posted on our website.
On the website? Or that that would be the...
Unless it was known, but it's certainly on our website.
Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I'll keep you updated as more information comes in. Next on the agenda is the November 7th Professional Development. For the upcoming November 7th Professional Development Day for QPS educators, over 80 different small group sessions are available for 950 professional staff members to choose from, with topics ranging from literacy, STEM, English learner, and special education supports, to integrating music and movement, educator wellness, and restorative practices, just to name a few. We are looking forward to the special day for the Quincy Public Schools professional staff members, and have provided a copy of the schedule at your places. Obviously, we appreciate all of the support of the mayor, and the school committee, and all of the SLT, and our principals, and of course, our staff for making this day possible for us, and we're looking forward to this very productive day with regard to these professional development opportunities, again, for over 950 of our educators. So that's a great thing. Next is the QPS Assessment Calendar 2023-2024. It's shared with you at your spaces in your packet. This is the schedule for the MAP and Amplify M-Class Early Literacy Universal and Dyslexia screenings, given three times per year, followed by integrated learning team meetings for grades K through 8. Preliminary dates for access, that is for English learner students, and MCAS assessments are also provided and will be updated as they are finalized. The QPS educator mini-grants, 92 Quincy Public Schools professional educators recently received mini-grants, up to $350 each, for a total of $32,200. The mini-grants will provide support for the academic, emotional, and social development of students. The annual QPS mini-grants are made possible thanks to the generosity of our Quincy School Community partnership members, including Mayor Koch, and to date, we have $585,000 that has been distributed to our educators. The list of all the recipients is provided at your locations, and again, I just want to congratulate all of our educators who won the mini-grants this year, and best of luck in their projects. Next is the Quincy Public Schools and City of Quincy events. Thanks to Mayor Koch and his staff, the dedication open house for the Dr. Richter Christopher Arrows Learning Center was held this past Sunday. The ceremony was enjoyed by the extended Christopher Arrows family, including President Christopher Arrows mother. Thanks to the members of the state and federal delegations, city councils, school committee, and Norfolk County Commissioners, who were so supportive in the funding of this wonderful addition to the Quincy Public Schools facilities. So thank you all for that event. To begin the transition process to the Learning Center, a Zoom meeting with Delacour's Early Childhood Center families was held on Monday evening. Thank you all of you who attended. Approximately 40 parents attended and heard an overview of the new school committee building and preliminary transition plans. The meeting was also recorded and will be posted on the Quincy Public Schools website for anyone interested in seeing that presentation. The Delacour's families who have signed up for scheduled tours of the new Learning Center building will be contacted by the end of this week to select a date and time. Tours will be scheduled in November, December, and again, in early 2024, so we're looking forward very much to expositing those, this building, to those families. Upcoming events include the MICA statewide marching band competition at Veterans Memorial Stadium this coming Sunday, October 29th, beginning at 11:00 AM. That's a great event, and it will be a very, very well-attended event based on last year's numbers, and I would encourage anyone interested in marching bands to attend. Again, the bands are phenomenal, so. The 30th Annual Special Education Parent Advisory Council Tronker Treat will be held on Sunday, October 29th, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM in the Wallaston School parking lot. Pre-register for this event on the CPAC website, which is quincypac.com. Quincy High School Student Council postponed the Haunted Hallways Community Event for younger students that was supposed to happen tonight, but we're hoping to reschedule that, so please watch the Quincy Public Schools website and social media for an updated information on that event. The North Quincy and Quincy High School Student Support Services are hosting the annual financial aid night for juniors and seniors and their families on Thursday, November 2nd, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM in the Quincy High School Auditorium. And on Wednesday, November 8th, clinical psychologist and creator of Open Parachute, Dr. Haley Watson, will host a parent academy on building student resiliency. The event will be held in the Central Middle School Auditorium at 6:00 PM. With that, that ends my superintendent's report.
Thank you, sir.
And good evening, everyone. Before I hand the presentation over, I do want to make some introductions with regard to everyone that's here tonight to present information on the new Squanton Elementary School. So obviously, our presenter is tonight, Brian LaRoche from PCA360, and Tina Ho from Arrow Street, our architect. PCA360, as you know, is our project manager, so thank you both for attending. I do want to introduce our principal of Squanton Elementary School, Stephen Sylvia, and our assistant principal, Megan Haley, is also with us here tonight. So with that, thank you all for attending, and I'll hand the presentation over to Mr. LaRoche.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for inviting us to be here tonight to present to you an update of the Squanton Elementary School project. This is our first presentation to the school committee, and there'll be many more to come as we begin the process. So I'll begin tonight with just giving you an overview of the project's schedule. As I alluded, we're pretty early in the process, so I will, let's see if I can, there we go, it worked. So that'll be the next slide, but as Superintendent Mulvey alluded to, the team that we have for the early phase of the project is Arrow Street, our architect, PCA360, the owner's representative, OPM, and the Mass School Building Authority, along with the city of Quincy. And then, as we get further along in the project, there'll certainly be more team members in the next, you know, six months will begin the process of finding a construction manager. But we're at the very beginning right now, so I'll just give you a quick overview of the MSBA process. It's a pretty lengthy process that we follow, as the MSBA has a pretty stringent procedure that you move through in order to get the grant. You know, they are our partner in this project. So we've already, the module one, which we finished already, is basically getting the funding agreement with the Mass School Building Authority, and then module two, which is forming the team, which is the two of us here now. And now we're into module three, which is the feasibility study. So the feasibility study is broken into two phases. The PDP, the Preliminary Design Program, which we just completed a few weeks ago, and formally submitted that to the MSBA, and we're waiting their comments. We've already moved on to the next part of this feasibility phase, which is called the PSR, or the Preferred Schematic Report. So tomorrow, we're going to be meeting with the School Building Committee, rather, and we'll be giving them the first look at some design options. So Arrow Street has prepared 10 options that we'll be presenting to the building committee for the first time. But tonight, we'd like to show you some of the work product that we've done to date to prepare for the, and lay the groundwork for the design of the new school. A lot of it is pretty, you know, basic in that we're looking at the existing building, we have a site survey done, and so forth. Tina will get into some of the details of that, but that really sets the groundwork for a lot of work that's to come. So, you know, another view of the project's schedule to show you where we're at, the red line is showing you where we are in the point in time, and we are, you know, just beginning the Preferred Schematic Report, which, there'll be quite a few meetings with the building committee. By the end of December is when we reach our next major milestone where we'll submit that work product to the MSBA. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tina to show you a little bit about what they've been up to.
Thank you, Brian.
Do you want to just use the keyboard?
Yeah, I can advance the slide.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for having Arrow Street as part of this meeting tonight. We're...
Hold on, Mike.
Oh, yep. Is that better? Good, good, good. Thank you. Yep, and so what you see in front of you, as you are probably all very aware of, is the Squanton School as it is currently. From a bird's-eye view, you could see that the public park is just behind it, and the school is on really three sides of the street, Huckins, Mayflower, as well as Standish. The building of the school actually consists of the 1919 building, which was the original school building, and then in 1949, the dark blue that flanked the 1919 building was added on. And lastly, the 1971 building was added on as the enrollment in the school and the families in the district started to grow. And so this is what we have currently, is a string of these buildings that sit on the Just to talk a little bit about the existing building, as Brian had mentioned, we're doing a lot of due diligence just to understand the conditions of the existing building, understanding how it's laid out, how it's utilized, but a lot of legwork that's being done to lay the foundation for the design process. But what you see here is some old photos of the existing 1919 building, the map of the location, and how really the Squanton Peninsula has grown, but also a view of the gym that is anchored at the corner next to the 1919 building. Just some interior views of the existing building, just to give you a sense of the type of space that's in there. There is a gym, a cafetorium really, because it's a combination of where they have their PE, but they also have their lunch there, and as well as you can see that there's a stage. So really, there's many purposes to this one space. It is well-used and well-loved. What you'll also see to the right of that is their open space media center or library. Again, it's a great space, has a lot of great light, and it's surrounded by classrooms. The classroom that you see on the lower right side, it is a good-sized classroom, but there's, the finishes are dated, are older, there's lighting that needs to be updated, things like that, such as base repairs, just basic things, but it has served the school very well. It still serves the school in a sense that it's a great space, and you'll see just some other examples of photos in the other classrooms. Accessibility throughout the school, around the school, on the exterior, on the grounds, but also within, there are challenges. As you can see, there are, because of the grade change, there are level changes within the school, although it is a one-story school. So you'll see that a lift was retrofitted so that it can navigate the steps on the interior, but just the same on the exterior, there are sloped walkways and stairs that would be able to allow you to get up to the gym. That view of the hallway, that's actually a sloped floor right there. So those are things that we would like to address in the new design. And just some conditions of the building envelope, these are, there's a close-up view of the existing brick, that it's a durable material, but over many decades, it starts to deteriorate, as you can start to see here, and you can start to see some of the windows as well, and the roofing, that there are issues that come up from time to time, and it's part of the maintenance of the building, of an old building. Building systems, so for instance, electrical, you can see, as well as their existing boiler... you can see, as well as their existing boiler. Those are systems that are also well-used, but beyond their service of life. So these are things that we look at carefully as we try to understand whether a building renovation or a combination of renovation addition makes sense for the school. And site, so as I mentioned, the site, it is a good-sized site, but there is a topography change. There are some nice features that are already there. As you can see, there is a large blacktop area where students have access for recess. One of their well-loved spaces is their outdoor classroom, which we've heard and would like to replicate or even add to as part of the new design. But what's also very beneficial to the school is the large park in, behind the school as well that gets utilized. So far, we've had some very good meetings with the school, with the district. These are some photos from our ed-visioning meetings, as well as school tours. And part of the ed-visioning is to really understand what are some of the goals for the school specifically, for Squanton, that is. And trying to understand what are their needs and speaking with the teachers and with the staff, we're able to get that information and understand what works best for the students at Squanton. But also, we were able to tour a couple of schools just to get ideas of what other districts are doing and how some of their goals of how they've implemented their learning spaces might align or work with the Squanton School. And so during the ed-visioning, we come up with the programming. And the programming, this is really just a diagram to show the multitude of spaces that the Squanton School would need to serve the students and the staff. So you can see that there are, in the blue, there's a number of classrooms that we need to meet the student enrollment. And in the purple are the support spaces for special education, but also for general education. But this is where we're also trying to show there would be a separate gym and a separate cafeteria versus the combined that they have currently.
I would just point out the gross area of the existing building versus what the programmatic area is now.
Yep, thank you, Brian. Yes, and in the very top corner there, the existing building is approximately 45,000 square feet. The proposed building is close to 80,000 square feet. So you can very easily see that the current building is very much undersized for what their needs are and based on very much different discussions as well as what MSBA guidelines require today for a modern school. This is how we arrived to the 80, almost 80,000-square-foot school. In terms of next steps, Brian talked a little bit about this, so I don't want to, I don't need to go through it too much, but we had completed the Preliminary Design Program Report. We're in the middle of the Preferred Schematic Report, so we're doing a lot of studies, a lot of various iterations, exploring ideas that we've been meeting with the working group, having good discussions and feedback. And soon, we have, will come to a preferred scheme by the time we submit the Preferred Schematic Report. And so there's still a lot of work to be done, still very early phases of the design. It will continue as we move into schematic design and still a lot of exploring to do. That concludes the presentation. Like to open up to questions?
Questions or comments? Mayor Koch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of notations. One is, as we know, we held a community meeting last month out in Squanton, really to get input as what's going on today. And that usually relates to drop-off and pickup and traffic and et cetera, et cetera. So we'll continue to keep the neighborhood in the loop, and the architects had a great idea. They asked people to submit their favorite memories of the school. Or something else, what was the other thing?
And what are their dreams and hopes for the school?
Okay, okay. So all of that input will be incorporated in the process, which is great. The other piece is, if you can go back to the image where it shows the bird's eye view of the site. There we go. So we see public park, that's parkland. So the goal is to get the school built on existing school land if we can. There may be some trade-off. Article 97 would be tripped, which protects parkland, so we may have to do a swap if we get into that. It's early to be talking about that because really, design layout will dictate some of that. But I know this will also become a public works project in that for the circulation purposes, there may be a widening of Huckins, there may be a widening of Mayflower and Standish to help the flow, both in the morning and afternoon. So just a couple of observations that we talked about with the neighbors at the community meeting. So thank you very much.
A couple of years ago, when this started being talked about, someone asked me about the facade, the front facade, and whether that can be incorporated into the new building, specifically the Indian at the top. Is there any discussion on that? And are you?
Yeah, we've had a considerable amount of discussion about the facade. Quite a few of the options that we're looking at has that being preserved in the design. So out of the 10 options, the MSBA requires that one of them, we look at the existing building. Can we just renovate the building and improve it? That's one. A few others are a whole-new building, all-new. And most of the schemes after that, probably six, are preserving the 1919. So those different schemes are going to be presented to the building committee tomorrow for their first look and in consideration. So after tomorrow, we'll probably narrow it down to three and then continue to pursue those. So that is definitely a part of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, just so exciting. It really is so exciting for the community and for our city to see this happening. I mean, it's a well-loved little spot. It has significant problems. I mean, we've all been in there, and it has significant problems. So this is just great for the community and for the children, certainly, and the staff that's been working there for years. So I'm thrilled about this.
I just want to add my comment as being part of the committee. I want to thank you for the work and the amount of time that you've spent on this project. People don't really understand how many meetings, how many hours, and how much discussion. So I thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, Literacy Program. We have Ms. Vaughn to present.
Hi, everyone. My name's Bridgette Vaughn. I'm the Literacy and ELA Coordinator for the district. And tonight, I'll be presenting to you the 2023-24 Literacy Program Improvement Plan for the Quincy Public Schools. Literacy is defined simply as the ability to read and write, but we all know that high literacy rates represent a potential for further intellectual growth and contribution to the economic, socio-cultural development of society. Literacy is the foundation of community and economic development. The ability to read accurately and fluently requires an incredible amount of cognitive flexibility and inference. When children in the primary grades have systematic and direct instruction in the foundational skills of reading and access to our language through read-alouds with rich, complex texts that builds their background knowledge, they begin to understand vocabulary in context. The syntactic, semantic, morphological, and pragmatic aspects of language development all become enriched. As they begin to use a variety of semantic and syntactic forms in their own language, they are also better able to understand and interact with the world around them. It's how they'll communicate with others via reading and writing, but also by speaking, listening, and creating. It is for this reason that the literacy program in the Quincy Public Schools is so essential. I'm thankful and honored to be here tonight to share this year's Literacy Program Improvement Plan with all of you. We've made tremendous strides over the past year, and we hope to continue this growth in order to maximize student learning throughout this school year. The plan starts off with our mission, which directly aligns with our English Language Arts vision for students in the Quincy Public Schools. To support that vision, last year, we were able to procure new English Language Arts curriculum and materials for all students in grades K through 5, Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts, or CKLA. This has been a truly exciting and rewarding endeavor. With the support of the superintendent's leadership team, I applied for and was awarded the federally-funded GLEAM Continuation Grant for over $740,000. This spring, I applied for year three and was awarded another $170,000, bringing the total for GLEAM funding in the Quincy Public Schools to over $1.1 million in three years. This would not be possible without the support from Mayor Koch, you, our school committee members, and Superintendent Mulvey and Assistant Superintendent Perkins. This funding and your continued support allow the literacy team and all English Language Arts educators to be able to bring the best that there is to the students in Quincy. Through our program design, with three tiers of instruction representing the levels of support, we can provide universal core support, strategic support, and/or intensive support depending on the individual needs of every student. Our literacy team works with all stakeholders within their buildings and communicates results of early literacy screening three times a year with all families through home connect letters. In addition, we decide what actions within the general education program will meet the students' needs, including differentiated or supplementary evidence-based reading instruction, and we share this with families as well. Our goals are measured specifically in two areas with universal early literacy skills measured by the Amplify M-class with DIBELS 8 and comprehension skills measured by the NWEA MAP reading assessment. You'll notice on pages 10 and 11, we were able to meet all of our goals for the 2022-23 school year. Our goal to decrease the number of students that need intensive support by 10% in kindergarten and grade 1 was met by decreasing this by 18% in both grade levels. In grade 2, the goal was to decrease this need for intensive support by 5%, and we were able to reduce this by 8%. The bar graph on page 10 shows the performance level of well-below benchmark on the Amplify M-class with DIBELS 8 for fall and spring. And you can see the significant drops in those levels indicated in blue. On page 11, our second goal reflection shows that we were able to meet our goal in improving reading comprehension in grades 2 and 3 with small group instruction and targeted reading intervention. The bar graph from the NWEA MAP reading assessment shows that we increased growth by 13.4 RIT points in grade 2 and 11.2 RIT points in grade 3. This exceeded our goal of an increase of 10 RIT points from fall to spring in both grade levels. Our, excuse me, our new goals for this school year have been adjusted and are more rigorous based on last year's progress. On page 13, you'll notice that in our first goal, which measures the foundational reading skills, we've increased our percentage numbers. We aim to decrease the percentage of students in the well-below benchmark performance measure by 15% in kindergarten and grade 1, 7% in grade 2, and we've added grade 3 this year and aim to decrease well-below percentages in this grade level by 5%. In our second goal, which measures growth in comprehension, we've increased RIT growth in reading in grade 2 to 12 points from fall to spring and 10 points in grade 3. Our action steps found on pages 14 through 16 continue to include supporting staff with administration of assessments, facilitation of integrated learning team meetings, and most importantly, providing students with evidence-based reading intervention. With input from all stakeholders, I will be submitting bimonthly GLEAM reports to DESI, which outline progress towards goals and show how we intentionally center literacy equity and cultural responsiveness across and among all schools through professional development, QPS literacy team meetings, and staff network meetings. State network meetings, excuse me. Professional development this year, listed on pages 17 through 19, is extremely robust with the addition of several strengthening sessions for educators in Amplify CKLA in topics like small group instruction, writing, supporting multilingual learners, and sessions for building leaders, like enhancing observations. In addition, we're offering several other literacy trainings and workshops during our November 7th Professional Day of Learning, with everything from sessions in spelling and morphology to building sound walls and using diverse texts as windows and mirrors. We also have a cohort of 24 educators this year completing either associate or classroom educator practicums in Orton-Gillingham through our partnership with the Commonwealth Learning Center. Finally, we'll also be providing family engagement and extended day opportunities through a number of before-and-after-school groups and family literacy events that are listed in Appendix B. In addition to those listed in the appendix, we'll also be having parent academies on topics of early literacy screening and overviews of the new core curriculum. On the literacy team, we know that literacy instruction involves so much more than teaching children to read and write. We want all students to have this solid foundation in literacy skills early on so that they are able to read, write, speak, listen, create, and learn with confidence far beyond these formative years. Thank you for your time, and I welcome your feedback and any questions.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Lebo.
Thank you. Yeah, your goals were great, and you did really an amazing job. I am so glad to see that reduction in tier 3. That is so impactful for our little kids, it really is. To see them making that kind of progress early on so they're not going to have these problems later on. So I think anything we can do along those lines is tremendous. It really is. I think this is wonderful. I think your goals are challenging, and I think that's great. I also want to tell you that I love the CKLA, and the teachers seem to love it. I've talked to a few teachers who were using it last year, and they loved it. They loved the response that we're getting from the kids. So it's pretty exciting to see. So I know it's always challenging to start a new curriculum like that. And I think just the way that you guys have rolled these things out and investigated options to make sure we were getting something that was evidence-based. And I'm just so proud of the team for finding this and for giving the teachers the support they need in implementing it. And to see the joy on the teachers' faces when they were talking about it was pretty cool. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Yublee.
I was just going to say thank you so much for the presentation. This is wonderful. This is really great stuff. And I love the versatility and the professional development that you have. It's wonderful, it's extensive. Thanks, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion by Mrs. Lebo, second by Mrs. Yublee. We approve.
Thank you.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item C, Mathematics Program Improvement Plan. We have Ms. Quinn to present. The floor is yours.
So before Ms. Quinn starts, I just want to say we're so excited to have her here today because this is our very first math improvement plan. So because of your support and Mayor Koch's support, we really have developed the math intervention team, the math specialists. And so we decided that as this team grows and builds, this team should match the literacy team and how we treat it. And so that is why we decided to present to you tonight a math improvement plan. And we're excited for our first one, and we're looking forward to really being able to work towards those goals. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kim Quinn.
Thank you. That was a wonderful introduction. Good evening, everyone. And it does give me great pleasure to be presenting this first-ever math program improvement plan for Quincy. ever math program improvement plan for Quincy. Prior to 2022, math specialists were only in three of our Title I schools. In September of 2022, the math team gained three additional members, allowing us to put math specialists into every elementary school so that students would be serviced. This school year, we added two more members to our team, allowing us to serve fifth and sixth grade at both Point Webster and Southwest Middle School. On page five, we have our program description. The mathematics program was developed to identify and support students who struggle to acquire foundational math skills. Students are selected by the Integrated Learning Team based on test assessment results and overall math performance. The focus of this intervention is to develop and support students' working knowledge of foundational skills and concepts in numeracy. Once identified, the student, the math specialist, look at the data and plan a course of action using research-based materials and activities. A list of these resources and interventions can be found on page six. The students may be serviced by the math specialist, by a math specialist pushing into a class or being pulled out during a student support block. The math program achievement is based on student growth and outcomes. Goals are set and measured by using one or more systems of measure. That includes the MAP, the Georgia Numeracy Project Diagnostic Assessment, and math running records. Looking on page eight, although I do not have an official math program improvement plan to look back on, I would like to take some time to look back on last year and what the team accomplished. Last year, the team focused on students in grades two and four and supported grades one and five when possible. Specialists pushed into the, during tier one instruction and centered time while also pulling small groups during intervention blocks. The team also supported the teachers in the implementation of our new core math resource, illustrative mathematics. This time consisted of planning with teachers, modeling lessons, co-teaching lessons, and helping with the implementation of centers. They also facilitated professional development sessions during the system-wide days. Our team goal last year was to evaluate various math screeners and select one to pilot. These screeners were rated on ease of use, time taken to administer, depth of data collected, and the inclusion of intervention resources. Although all the screeners offered important data, the Georgia Numeracy Project Diagnostic and Interventions was chosen to be piloted this year in several of our first-grade classrooms. On page nine, I reflected on the district goal, which was a total increase of three achievement percentage points and exceeding or meeting achievement levels. And as I mentioned in the district data presentation, when comparing cohorts, which compares the same students, we met our goal in grades four, six, and eight. On page 10, the achievement percentage report is used to compare the grade level to the same grade level from last year. Looking at it this way, grade five and seven increased by over 5%. And on page 11, you see the district MAP goal, where we achieved our goal in each grade level. So I'd like now to shift to our math team goals for the upcoming school year. If you look at page 13, you will see the first goal, which mirrors our district MAP goal. The math team will support the improvement of students' math fluency and number sense through small group instruction and support the classroom teachers as evidenced by an increase in RIT points and those change based on the grade level. In addition to giving targeted instruction to our math students, the team will support teachers with the administration of the MAP and help their schools facilitate ILT meetings where they analyze data and share findings. On page 14, you'll see that the team has already participated in targeted site-based professional development with IM Consultant Maureen O'Connell and worked with math consultant Anna-Lise Record on research-based strategies to support their students. Our second goal is to provide parents opportunities to acquire information, knowledge, and skills to support their children's math journey through scheduled parent academies and website resources. We will host an elementary-focused parent academy along with IM Consultant Maureen O'Connell. This event will showcase illustrative mathematics and give the parents a taste of what is happening in the classroom and what their students are engaging in each day by giving the parents actual math activities to participate in. Anna-Lise Record will host Math Fluency Just Doesn't Happen for our K to 5 parents. Anna-Lise will talk about how important it is to build children's math fluency. Parents will have an opportunity to explore various math fluency games and leave with cards, dice, and copies of the games. And with the assistance of Kelly Powers, we will share math resources via the QPS website. And if you look at page 15, you'll see our final goal, which is to work along with the other math educators in the system to update our math pacing guides. For grades three to five, this is particularly important since MCAS occurs a month prior or over a month prior to the end of the school year, making the timeline for instruction shorter than early elementary grades. And in the final pages of the improvement plan, you'll find the related math professional development that we're offering this year, many of which I've already highlighted. There's also a chart that contains the names and schools where our math specialists work along with the dates of our monthly meetings, and finally, the district action steps and family and extended day opportunities that are being offered. The math team is so proud of the work that we've accomplished this last year, and we look forward to implementing our 2023-2024 math program improvement plan over the next eight months. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, comments? Mrs. Hubley.
This is wonderful, so great. I love your goals, and I especially love your goal number two, having the parent goal in there with the parent academies. One thing I hear from parents all the time is how they just want to help their kids with math and that they are struggling, so having more parent academies is wonderful. One thing, I'm a huge Greg Tang, Tan Fang fan, and I don't, do you know if we have him scheduled? I know he's very hard to schedule, but do you know?
Right now, we do not. But yeah. He is always, he is always somebody that we would love to see come back, but right now, we do not have him scheduled.
I would love to see him on it, because I think last time he was on, he was so helpful to all the parents that were on that Zoom call that he, then that was amazing. And the kids that were on that call, they were asking him questions too, and he was helping them as well.
Absolutely.
That was fabulous, so thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much for this. It's great to have a math program improvement plan in front of us. Certainly, the MAP goals, you know, I love MAP way better than I like MCAS. Unfortunately, MCAS bites us every once in a while, so I'm interested to see how much of this work we're putting into the MAP assessment is going to help us improve our MCAS scores. I believe it will, because I really do not like looking at the MCAS scores. With Ms. Hubley, I'm so pleased to see the parent academy. I can remember when we put in, this must be going back a few years, base 10, and nobody knew what it was. No parents, nobody who had graduated from high school two years before that could help anybody with their homework ever again in math, because nobody knew what it was. And we weren't as good at doing parent academies then as we have become, so I'm thrilled that you're going to be doing a parent academy, you're going to be helping them with that. I love the illustrated math, too. I think it's a terrific, a terrific tool that we have at our disposal now, and so I'm pleased to see that. And I'm wondering about the pacing guide. So the pacing guide, is it going to also address the fact that we're using new curriculum?
Absolutely, yes. It's to align everything, yes.
So you're hoping to have that done by the end of the year?
Mm-hmm, or even before that, yes.
And you're working K through 12?
We're working K to 5 because of, that's where we've done the illustrative mathematics, yeah.
All right, thank you very much, I'm good.
Mr. Bergoli.
Consistently, our math scores, grades five and six, have been not, not up to what they should be. Are we targeting that particular group in order to effect some change, to bring those scores up? Because every year, we hear the same thing, it's always fifth and sixth grade where we're low in our math skills, our program, so.
Absolutely, and we're very happy that we have that ability with Point Webster and Southwest to have the math interventionist there who will be targeting the fifth and sixth grade as there is, there as well. Yeah, so we are, we are on it, and we are, you know, we have things in place, and fifth grade is definitely a target this year for us in terms of the math interventionist team that has shifted into making sure that they get into the fifth grade classes as well.
And we heard our ELA scores in that particular group, who had to use the Zoom way of learning. It was, it was a disaster. Do you have any statistics about our math scores regarding that particular group?
I think it's interesting because, I mean, I think in general, kids struggled with Zoom. I think that was pretty much like across curricula areas and across the board, but what's interesting is when you look at the state scores and even our scores do mirror the state scores, actually, this is math's time. Like, for some reason, math, the students actually didn't like slink back as much as they did in ELA. So we didn't, we didn't see that, there's a drop, but the drop was much more significant, I guess, across the state and in Quincy in ELA than it was in math.
It was almost six points in ELA, right?
Yeah, ELA, and that's, that's like, we're not the only ones. I mean, that's literally the whole state, and I think we talked about in third grade in particular is an area of concern. You know, I think when we, last year, when we first got our MCAS scores back, we were actually really happy with the math scores, considering what everyone had been through, you know? And I think this year, too, we're also, you know, we're pretty happy. We always have areas of concern, like you said, Mr. Bergoli, the middle school is always, I think, an area of concerns in terms of math scores, but I think that Kim's done a really great job. She has Molly Voki coming back. We haven't done that since before COVID. You know, we're bringing back all of these things that did work and were helping before COVID, you know, to try to help, help boost our math scores back up.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one more thing. I'm so grateful that we were able to get in the budget those positions for the two middle schools to have the fifth and sixth grades, because they really were not getting the attention that they needed, unfortunately, but we have those people in there, and now they're getting even more attention than our, than our other schools, which is okay with me. But I just, I'm really grateful that we're able to get our budget to that point. I'm grateful to the mayor for making sure that we had access to those kinds of funding to do that, and because it was really important to us that those schools had that, so that's just last comment.
I want to use my two cents worth, like I do every time. And Ms. Perkins, you can relate to this. The fact that our kids do not do well with open response questions in mathematics should dictate practicing what an answer should look like, not just with math teachers. Ms. Vaughn, you may be able to help out. Will you design a way to answer the question, showing graphs and data to support your argument so that our kids get used to answering this type of question? I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Amy.
Hi, I love your work.
Add on, Amy.
So I love what you've been doing. I've always been a math kid, and so I guess I'm talking for my former self, and I know your focus will always be on, you know, raising us up all to one bar, but for me, in elementary school, I always felt that I was never challenged, and I'd love it if you could look into for the extended day opportunities, something for like math competitions. I got into them later on, but something for elementary schools to, for kids. I know you don't really want to bring competition in it, but something they can all kind of do to challenge themselves a bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, Amy was a math kid growing up, and she felt like she wasn't maybe challenged in elementary school, and she got later in life, or in high school, got into math competitions, and she thinks that that would be a great after-school program for the elementary school. And I would say I agree. I think that would be really fun, so thank you. Thank you for that idea, Amy.
Of the mathletes way back in the day, I don't know if they still do that at all anymore, but I think some of the, I don't know if any of the elementary schools are still doing that.
Some schools did used to do mathletes, but I'm not sure what schools are still doing it now, but we can, it's definitely something we could look into. I mean, even just across schools would be kind of fun, you know? So I think we could, we could figure something out for sure.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, item D, superintendent's goals. This is for referral to teaching and learning. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Mayor Koch to approve the math program improvement plan. Second by Mr. Bergoli. All those in favor. Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Superintendent's goals.
Proposed goals for the 2023-20, it should say 2024, school year, and this would be for referral to teaching and learning for additional discussion.
Okay, so be it. Okay, we now have the MASCE convention resolutions. Ms. Hubley.
Thank you. Everyone has these before them, they're the resolutions, there are eight of them. Some of them we can go over quicker than others because they do not pertain to us, and in past, we have just had, the body has had me abstain from these votes, such as the first one, which is Resolution One, which is full stable funding for Metco. I would say in the past, we have had me abstain to these type of votes. I would entertain if that was what the body would like me to do again to this one, if there's any discussion on that. Thank you. Moving on to resolution number two, regards investigations and recommendations for transportation bidding procedures. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees prevail upon the Office of the State Auditor to investigate the bidding practices of school transportation providers and to present such findings and recommendations as may be necessary to contain costs and make efficient transportation services available for public schools. And if there's open to conversation on that and how you would prefer the vote go.
Again, it doesn't really pertain to us because we don't do this, but it has, it has been disgraceful what's been going on in the Commonwealth around this, so I think it would, for me, I wouldn't mind supporting this.
A motion of Mrs. Lebo. Second by Mr. Bergoli. We approve.
Yes, okay.
All those in favor.
Number three is also a regional transportation, a resolution, so I would say that we would move to abstain on this one as well. If anyone has any conversation on that.
Motion, Mr. Bergoli. We abstain. Second by Mrs. Lebo.
Okay, number four. This is a resolution for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Therefore, let it be resolved that Massachusetts Association of School Committees recommends that all districts adopt the position of DEI Coordinator to work towards an anti-racist school system. Since we have a DEI director, and I do, like this says, it recommends, it's not insisting, it's not saying they have to if they don't have the funding for this position, it's only stating that we recommend that we do. I would vote yes.
A motion, Mr. Bergoli, that we accept.
Conversation first to see if they actually.
You can have a conversation.
Does anyone have any conversation of voting yes?
No, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor. Opposed, the ayes have it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number five is Resolution Five is a mass, mass building, school building authority resolution, and I have asked Mr. Malaney to come up and discuss this resolution with us because there are four parts in the let it be resolved, further let it be resolved, let it be, three, let it be resolved, and I thought Mr. Malaney would be better off to go over that with us. Thank you.
This is regarding the funding for the Mass School Building Authority. Currently, under MasterCard Law 70B, it's capped at $800 million per year, and it can go up 4.5. It's capped at eighty, $800 million per year, and it can go up 4.5%. What they're, and also has, so basically what they're looking at is increased funding beyond the $800 million a year to put in the accelerated repair program, which is stopped. And would basically would allow more money to go into the school building authority. Quincy's been very fortunate working with the school committee, the mayor's office, and our delegation, as well as the treasurer's office. We've received a great deal of money through the MSBA. As you know, oftentimes when we're talking about projects, we'll put them in the queue and have to wait till they come out, back up again. This might help alleviate some of that wait period if there were more funds available. And again, this is not anything from the districts themselves, but it's additional funding at the state level.
Mrs. Lebo.
I have a question for you, Jim. So the 800, 800 million cap is not because they don't bring in any more money, it's just that they capped it at that. They're still collecting money that they're, do we know how much money they're collecting above the 800 with this? Is it some percent of the sales tax?
It is, yeah.
And I know that in talking to the treasurer of the Commonwealth, there's, there's more money needed. It's not purely lifting the cap. There's not enough funding either to meet the, the demand out there.
So they don't, they would have to, they would have to raise more from that money.
The legislature will have to look at that issue, yeah.
I think one of the areas they were probably looking at was the millionaire's tax.
Which is subject to appropriation.
Yep.
That's correct.
As is circuit breaker and everything else.
As is this, I guess. I, I, I think it's a good idea personally, but.
I have no problem. I mean, some, you know, these are resolutions. It's like writing a letter to Santa Claus. I don't think it's.
I think it is.
There are two other parts to this as well. There's the second part that is the reinstate the accelerated repair program for the 2024 applications. Does that have any relevance to us?
We've, we've used this program in the past for other, for our buildings, for the repairs, particularly boilers, windows, things like that nature.
Okay. And then the second portion was, and third portion was to allow public schools to be included in the accelerated repair program core program. That's the same thing?
I believe that's for the preschool.
Yeah, like the early childhood.
Oh, sorry. Yes, that's right. Okay, so that would actually benefit us as well. So we would vote yes on this?
Lebo, seconded by Mr. Bergoli. We approve. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Malaney. Appreciate you coming forward for that one. Thank you. Number six resolution is School Bus Stop Armed Surveillance Act and Reinforcement of Penalties. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the Massachusetts legislator, legislature to enact legislation, to pass a law of the ability for cities and towns to install on all school buses live digital, digital live video detection monitoring systems for the purpose of enforcing violations against owner of, the owner of the motor vehicle whose vehicle failed to stop for school buses when required to do so by law. And further be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls and basically to increase the raising of fines for passing a school bus to significant schedule of fines. So.
Mr. Bergoli.
This is a no-brainer. Safety of our kids, absolutely.
I would say we vote yes on this as well.
A motion, Mr. Bergoli, seconded by Mr. Lebo. Mrs. Lebo, we approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Okay, resolution seven is related to MCAS. So it's, you have it before, there's four sections. I don't know if anyone has any discussion on, on the, where let it be resolved that Massachusetts Association of School Committees urges, urges is the word, Massachusetts to develop a wider, more consensus-built strategy for evaluation services that are meaning, meaningful input from legis, can't talk, legislative stakeholders. And like I said, there are three other sections to this. Do we have any comments on this, on this part of the therefore let it be resolved?
Mrs. Lebo.
I, you know, I certainly, I really, really liked the first one, urges Massachusetts to develop a wider, more consensus-built strategy for an evaluation system with meaningful input. I agree with that completely. Comprehensive evaluation of, investigate the extent of biases is a good thing, but I don't know why you would ask them to stop all testing before they have some other plan that they are going to do something with. So they should have an alternative to the high-stakes MCAS test, yes. But then should we stop what we're doing now and have nothing until they figure this stuff out? I don't know. I just, I don't, I'm not sure that I feel comfortable with it.
I concur with you on that, absolutely. There's got to be a measure, so we don't like what's there, but it's got to be something ready to go.
It has to be some sort of accountability for us and for our, I just think there does. So I'm not comfortable with this.
I could ask for, for an amendment to remove that portion. If we were, wanted to vote yes on the rest of it, if they took that out, I would be able to go up and ask for them to amend it. And if, if, it would have to be voted on by the body to take that section out. And then if so, then we could vote yes. But if not, I would abstain. I could do that.
They'll just make a motion. We abstain or vote no.
Okay, I'm going to say I'm fine with doing that if that's what everybody wants.
A motion, Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mayor Koch. We vote no. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes.
Yeah, I can go up and say that we're not in favor of that section.
Okay.
And the last section is resolution eight is the safe storage of firearms, which recommends the districts urge their superintendent and staff to create an appropriate communication to parents and guardians that explains the importance of secure firearm storage to protect children and teams from unauthorized access to unsecure firearms and their legal obligations consistent to the Massachusetts Safe Storage Law, and that Massachusetts Association of School Committees urges other communities to work with their law, local law enforcement agencies, health agencies, and nonprofit organizations to communicate and to collaborate there and increase efforts to inform district parents and guardians of their obligations regarding secure storage and firearms in their homes and in their vehicles. And I would vote yes on this. I think that's absolutely something we should urge superintendents to do.
Okay. A motion, Mrs. Hubley. We vote yes. Is there a second? Mr. Bergoli seconds. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hubley. Okay, superintendent, items F, G, H, and I.
Thank you. We have a grant for your consideration and approval for the 2023-2024 school year. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has awarded Quincy Public Schools a social and emotional learning mental health grant of $80,325.
Motion to approve.
A motion of Mayor Koch, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. Superintendent.
And just want to thank Maureen Papil for her work on that and getting that grant. Thank you, Maureen.
All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Item G.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a roll call.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Bergoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill, Mr. Gatto, Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro.
Yes. Mayor Koch. Item G.
This is another grant asking for your approval. The Quincy Lodge of Alex has made their annual donation of dictionaries to 750 grade three students valued at $18,625.
Motion of Mr. Bergoli, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. Superintendent.
Mr. Bergoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill, Mr. Gatto, Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mr. Santoro.
Yes.
Mayor Koch.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item H.
Overnight travel out of state, April 5th through the 10th, 2024, North Quincy High School, Air Force Junior ROTC to New Jersey, Maryland, and Virginia.
Motion, Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. Superintendent.
I think that's an all in favor.
All in favor.
Oh, it's roll call? Oh, it is a roll call.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All in favor vote.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Next is overnight travel out of the country, April 13th to the 21st, 2024, Quincy High School, grades 10 through 12 to Venice, Italy, Lucerne, Switzerland, Paris, and France.
Nice.
On the motion?
Superintendent, I'm sorry.
Going to be any chaperones?
Mayor Koch. A motion by Mayor Koch, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional business in communications, we have upcoming school committee meetings on November 15th and December 13th at 6:30. Mayor Koch, Communications.
Yes, I received today a communication from the School Building Authority. It was interesting, we were talking about the accelerated program and the funding and so forth. I'd ask Mrs. Owens if she could read it into the record.
Dear Mayor Koch, I please report that the Board of the Massachusetts School Building Authority voted to approve the proposed accelerated repair project for this, in the city of Quincy for a boiler replacement project at the Francis W. Parker School, a partial roof replacement at the Montclair School, and a partial roof replacement at the Wallaston School. The Board approved an estimated maximum total facilities grant for each project, as shown in the table below, which does not include any funds for potentially eligible owners or construction contingency expenditures. In the event that the MSBA determines that any owners and/or construction contingency expenditures are eligible for reimbursement, the maximum total facilities grant for the Francis W. Parker School, the Montclair School, and the Wallaston School projects may increase to each amount shown below. The final grant amounts will be determined by the MSBA based on a review and audit of all project costs incurred by the city in accordance with the MSBA's regulations, policies, and guidelines and the project funding agreement. The final grant amount may be an amount less than the estimated maximum total facilities grant. For Francis Parker, the estimated maximum total facilities grant is $766,920. For Montclair, $648,157. And for Wallaston, $644,783. Pursuant to the terms of the MSBA's accelerated repair program, the city has 90 days to acquire and certify local approval for an appropriation and all of the necessary local votes or approvals showing acceptance of the cost, site, type, scope, and timeline, excuse me, for the Francis W. Parker School, the Montclair School, and the Wallaston School projects. Upon receipt of the certified votes demonstrating local approval, the MSBA and the city will execute a project funding agreement, which will set forth the terms and conditions pursuant to which the city will receive its grant from the MSBA. Once the project funding agreement has been executed by both parties, the city will be eligible to submit requests for reimbursement for proposed project costs to the MSBA. We'll be contacting you soon to discuss these next steps in more detail, but in the meantime, I wanted to share with you the Board's approval for a boiler replacement project at the Francis W. Parker School, a partial roof replacement at the Montclair School, and a partial roof replacement at the Wallaston School, and the Board's authorization to execute a project funding agreement for this proposed project. Sincerely, Mary L. Paquetti, Executive Director.
So we got it in under the wire before the cap was put on. I did want to publicly thank treasurer, state treasurer Deb Goldberg, the Board, and our state delegation, who has committed to funding these programs. So we're grateful for that, and we'll keep that process moving. So it'll be something before the city council in the coming months.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, there are no reports on subcommittees. I want to.
Some teaching and learning or SIPs soon? I don't see anything. I don't want to be, I don't want to be doing SIPs in February.
No, I have a draft to share.
Thank you.
I do want to recognize two students. Again, Amy, thank you for your presence, but I want to welcome Molly Smith, Kada, from